Good afternoon. The board of commissioners meeting October the 5th, 2023 will start with introductions of the guys.
Kristy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehaus.
Philo County Administrator.
Michael Freeman.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We always start our meeting with prayer and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehaus.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Yes.
All right, we have a special presentation today, a proclamation recognizing Digital Inclusion Week. And I'll start it off. Proclamation recognizing Digital Inclusion Week. Whereas Digital Inclusion Week is an annual week of awareness, recognition, and celebration, where organizations and individuals across the country host special events to promote digital equity in their communities.
And whereas this year's theme is turning our moment into movement, signaling a turning point in time of action for the digital inclusion movement, and whereas the digital divide prevents equal participation and opportunity in all parts of life, and it comes disproportionately affects older adults, minorities, low-income households, people with disabilities, veterans, and people in rural areas.
And whereas broadband Ohio is writing a plan to address the digital divide through affordable broadband access, digital skills, tech support, and access to laptops. And whereas broadband Ohio's plan will help our community leverage 2.75 billion in funding for digital inclusion in tandem with the bipartisan infrastructure deal.
Whereas Hamilton County has been an essential partner in digital inclusion efforts, investing 3.5 million dollars in broadband internet access within Hamilton County and making broadband internet access available to all. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners declares and proclaims that October 2nd through the 6th, 2023 be known as Digital Inclusion Week in all of Hamilton County. Thank you. Before you get started, we're going to open it up. Vice President Dreehaus, do you have anything?
Just happy to be celebrating the occasion. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We know how essential broadband is to our children, especially to our children, so I'm glad to be a part of this.
I just want to thank our board. We were on the cutting edge of this. Right during the COVID, we saw so many areas that did not have access to Wi-Fi, children not have access to it, and we were able to step forward a number of areas, including Lincoln Heights and Deer Park and Lachlan, in a very short time to try to help bridge that gap. And then we went further with our ARPA funds with the 3.5 million and partnering with United Way. So we're excited. I know there's areas like Avondale, Russ Harrison has contacted us, a number of areas that are still in need, and so this highlights the need. So thank you, and if you want to introduce yourself and say something.
Yes, absolutely. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Nina Neto, and I am joined today by my colleague Hannah Harris. We are here as representatives of United Way of Greater Cincinnati and as a Hamilton County resident myself to thank the Board of County Commissioners and County Administrators for your commitment to closing the digital divide in our county by signing the Digital Inclusion Week proclamation that was submitted through President Reese. In our goal to increase digital access in our region by 5% over the next two years, United Way of Greater Cincinnati is working to connect Hamilton County residents with affordable internet through the Affordable Connectivity Program. We also worked with Broadband Ohio and groups from across 16 counties in southwest Ohio to develop the region's digital equity plan. This plan, which we will release later this month, focuses on four key areas: affordable broadband access, digital skills enhancement, online security, and the provision of internet-enabled devices. We look forward to supporting the Board in promoting financial and educational empowerment in our region by closing the digital divide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to come and present the proclamation and take a photo. So stay up here. Thank you. Vice President Dreehaus, you have a group to introduce that's here.
I do. Thank you for the deference. They were just walking to the elevators, and I saw them, and I thought, whoa, wait a minute. I think, ladies, you're right on time. And so this is an international delegation from Women's Peace and Security. So this is a group that's traveling all over the United States to understand and have a conversation with folks throughout our country as to what we're doing by way of women's peace and security, what they can learn and what they can share, and inform us on how they are doing. So ladies, I didn't want to have you leave without an official welcome from Hamilton County.
We want to definitely welcome you. Thank you for all your work, and this is, I think, another historic moment for Hamilton County. Commissioner Dumas, would you like to say welcome?
Welcome, and thank you for all that you do. We understand and try. I'm better trying to understand your struggles and what you have to come up to, to diversity that you experience and how we can help you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome to stick around. We have the most exciting meetings ever, but if you have something else to do, we understand. Okay? Thank you. Okay. All right. Go to public comments. Are there anyone on Zoom? Okay, great. All right, we'll start with the comments. Each person has two minutes, and we'll go with Marcus Thompson.
So good afternoon, Commissioners. I appreciate you having me here. My name is Marcus Thompson. I'm here on behalf of Triversity Construction, and I'm here to advocate for the transient occupancy tax. So you'll hear a lot about the economic impact that the Convention Center district will have. What I want to focus on is the impact that it will have on labor and jobs. Specific to the Duke Energy Center, which Triversity is a part of, that project has a 45% already embedded goal of MBE participation. And so when you think about what that will do for the minority, excuse me, the minority individuals and minority companies in this region, it's extremely important that we pass this legislature. And then as well, when you think about what it will do for the individuals, when you think about the scopes of work that can be broken out, when you think about the jobs that will happen following the completion of this project, I would just encourage you to think about how the impact will be on the people of this region and how important it is to increase this tax to just 1%, and what will happen in the long run. And so with that, you have about 40 seconds of my time. Thank you.
Appreciate that. That sounds great in Congress. We don't, we can't pass it on here. Thank you. Next, Jim Harris. Okay, all right. Bill.
Hi, Bill.
How are you? You don't get any extra time now.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'm also here to speak on behalf of the occupancy tax and what I feel it can do for not only the city and the county, but also the residents of Hamilton County. And the fact that building the hotel and remodeling the Convention Center will provide thousands of jobs for folks that sorely need them. Lord knows that we have talked about employee readiness and other programs to help young men and women who may not have other opportunities to go to college, to get into the building trades and other lines of work in the construction industry. And I see this as a big potential for the city of Cincinnati and for Hamilton County both to be able to do that. We've got a lot of projects coming up in the future, obviously with the new bridge, the Western Hills Viaduct, everything else that is going to be going on around Cincinnati. But to branch out even a little further, if you go up 71, 60 miles, you're going to have a brand-new battery plant there, the Honda Battery Plant, Columbus, Ohio, with all the work that's going on in Intel. Indianapolis, Indiana is bursting with work also with battery plants and Eli Lilly and everything else. And I see those industries and the other industry that comes along with them having to branch out and come a little further away from those centers where they're going to be right now. And Cincinnati has got everything that these folks need to bring those jobs here and help in that manner also. I think it gives us an opportunity to have a world-class convention center, a world-class hotel that will allow us to bring more conventions here. Lord knows, I grew up in Hamilton County, went away for a little while in the military, came back. I live in West Price Hill now in the city of Cincinnati in Hamilton County, and I love it, have no desire to go anywhere else probably for the rest of my life. I'm one of our biggest cheerleaders. Honest to God, anywhere I go in the country, that's the first thing I tell them is I am a proud, proud resident of the city of Cincinnati, Hamilton County. I would love to be able to tell my colleagues in Annapolis, Maryland, and Washington, DC at our internationals to come to Cincinnati and consider bringing their conventions here also. This will help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Brian Griffin.
Putting me after Mr. Fraley is an unfortunate circumstance. He's always good. Anyway, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to address the commission today. I'm Brian Griffin. I'm the Executive Secretary of Treasury of the Cincinnati AFL-CIO Labor Council, and I believe that these are extremely important projects that need to be done for our community. And I think there's three things that need to be considered whenever you hold up projects like this to the light of day, and why should we do them? And is it, will the project substantially benefit both the standing and the capacity of the city and the county to provide services necessary to our region? Are we doing everything possible to make sure that the people providing their skills and applying their crafts are the best trained and most capable of performing their unique skill set in the fulfillment of that project? And the third point that I think is a guiding light is, are we doing everything possible to make this a closed system, to make sure that
Happy to be celebrating the occasion. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We know how essential broadband is to our children, especially to our children, so I'm glad to be a part of this.
I just want to thank our board. We were on the cutting edge of this. Right during the COVID, we saw so many areas that did not have access to Wi-Fi, children not have access to it, and we were able to step forward a number of areas, including Lincoln Heights and Deer Park and Lachlan, in a very short time to try to help bridge that gap. And then we went further with our ARPA funds, with the 3.5 million, and partnering with United Way. So we're excited. I know there's areas like Avondale. Russ Harrison has contacted us, a number of areas that are still in need. And so this highlights the need. So, thank you. And if you want to introduce yourself and say something.
Yes, absolutely. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Nina Neto, and I am joined today by my colleague Hannah Harris. We are here as representatives of United Way of Greater Cincinnati and as a Hamilton County resident myself to thank the Board of County Commissioners and County Administrators for your commitment to closing the digital divide in our county by signing the Digital Inclusion Week proclamation that was submitted through President Reese. In our goal to increase digital access in our region by 5% over the next two years, United Way of Greater Cincinnati is working to connect Hamilton County residents with affordable internet through the Affordable Connectivity Program. We also worked with Broadband Ohio and groups from across 16 counties in southwest Ohio to develop the region's digital equity plan. This plan, which we will release later this month, focuses on four key areas: affordable broadband access, digital skills enhancement, online security, and the provision of internet-enabled devices. We look forward to supporting the Board in promoting financial and educational empowerment in our region by closing the digital divide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to come and present the proclamation and take a photo. So stay up here. Thank you. Vice President Drew House, you have a group to introduce that's here.
I do. Thank you for the deference. They were just walking to the elevators, and I saw them, and I thought, whoa, wait a minute. I think, ladies, you're right on time. And so this is an international delegation from Women's Peace and Security. So this is a group that's traveling all over the United States to understand and have a conversation with folks throughout our country as to what we're doing by way of women's peace and security, what they can learn and what they can share, and inform us on how they are doing. So, ladies, I didn't want to have you leave without an official welcome from Hamilton County.
We want to definitely welcome you. Thank you for all your work. And this is, I think, another historic moment for Hamilton County. Commissioner Dumas, would you like to say welcome?
Welcome, and thank you for all that you do. We understand and try. I'm better trying to understand your struggles and what you have to come up to, to diversity that you experience and how we can help you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome to stick around. We have the most exciting meetings ever. But if you have something else to do, we understand. Okay? Thank you. Okay. All right. Go to public comments. Are there anyone on Zoom? Okay, great. All right, we'll start with the comments. Each person has two minutes. And we'll go with Marcus Thompson.
Yeah. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. I appreciate you having me here. My name is Marcus Thompson. I'm here on behalf of Triversity Construction, and I'm here to advocate for the transient occupancy tax. So, you'll hear a lot about the economic impact that the Convention Center District will have. What I want to focus on is the impact that it will have on labor and jobs. Specific to the Duke Energy Center, which Triversity is a part of, that project has a 45% already embedded goal of MBE participation. And so, when you think about what that will do for the minority, excuse me, the minority individuals and minority companies in this region, it's extremely important that we pass this legislature. And then, as well, when you think about what it will do for the individuals, when you think about the scopes of work that can be broken out, when you think about the jobs that will happen following the completion of this project, I would just encourage you to think about how the impact will be on the people of this region and how important it is to increase this tax to just 1% and what will happen in the long run. And so with that, you have about 40 seconds of my time. Thank you.
Appreciate that. That sounds great in Congress. We don't, you can't pass it on here. Thank you. Next, Jim Harris. Okay, all right. Bill. Hi, Bill Corley. How are you? You don't get any extra time now.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'm also here to speak on behalf of the occupancy tax and what I feel it can do for not only the city and the county, but also the residents of Hamilton County. And the fact that building the hotel and remodeling the Convention Center will provide thousands of jobs for folks that sorely need them. Lord knows that we have talked about employee readiness and other programs to help young men and women who may not have other opportunities to go to college to get into the building trades and other lines of work in the construction industry. And I see this as a big potential for the city of Cincinnati and for Hamilton County both to be able to do that. We've got a lot of projects coming up in the future, obviously with the new bridge, the Western Hills Viaduct, everything else that is going to be going on around Cincinnati. But to branch out even a little further, if you go up 71, 60 miles, you're going to have a brand-new battery plant there, the Honda Battery Plant, Columbus, Ohio, with all the work that's going on in Intel. Indianapolis, Indiana is bursting with work also with battery plants and Eli Lilly and everything else. And I see those industries and the other industry that comes along with them having to branch out and come a little further away from those centers where they're going to be right now. And Cincinnati has got everything that these folks need to bring those jobs here and help in that manner also. I think it gives us an opportunity to have a world-class convention center, a world-class hotel that will allow us to bring more conventions here. Lord knows, I grew up in Hamilton County, went away for a little while in the military, came back. I live in West Price Hill now in the city of Cincinnati in Hamilton County, and I love it. Have no desire to go anywhere else, probably for the rest of my life. I'm one of our biggest cheerleaders. Honest to God, anywhere I go in the country, that's the first thing I tell them is I am a proud, proud resident of the city of Cincinnati, Hamilton County. I would love to be able to tell my colleagues in Annapolis, Maryland, and Washington, DC, at our internationals to come to Cincinnati and consider bringing their conventions here also. This will help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Brian Griffin.
Putting me after Mr. Fraley is an unfortunate circumstance. He's always good. Anyway, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to address the Commission today. I'm Brian Griffin. I'm the Executive Secretary of Treasury of the Cincinnati AFL-CIO Labor Council. And I believe that these are extremely important projects that need to be done for our community. And I think there's three things that need to be considered whenever you hold up projects like this to the light of day, and why should we do them? And is it, will the project substantially benefit both the standing and the capacity of the city and the county to provide services necessary to our region? Are we doing everything possible to make sure that the people providing their skills and applying their crafts are the best-trained and most capable of performing their unique skill set in the fulfillment of that project? And the third point that I think is a guiding light is, are we doing everything possible to make this a closed system? To make sure that the money we are investing is optimized for the benefit of the city and the county and those working on the projects, i.e., spending city and county money, in the city and the county, on city and county workers, with an eye towards successful completion of this project, on time and on budget, while doing everything possible to future-proof our workforce and provide accessible pathways to career readiness through this investment? Interesting fact: The U.S. Labor Movement is second only to the U.S. Military in providing highly coveted training that places our apprentices in career pathways that all but guarantee a strong, middle-class income, where they may be productive citizens earning good wages, paying taxes under safer conditions with good benefits, a promise of retirement with income and dignity, and a life well-lived. Furthermore, when, not if, but when this project is completed by my sisters and brothers in labor, and these properties are then also substantially operated by the sisters and brothers of the southwest Ohio labor community, the broader national labor community will beat a path to our door to celebrate labor with elaborate and expensive conventions, conferences, and events it currently cannot host here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Jamison.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I'm Todd Jamison with Renfro Productions. We are the producers of the 66th Annual Cincinnati Boat, Sport, and Travel Show, held in your beautiful Convention Center since the-
Excuse me, they're asking you to come closer to the microphone so they could hear. We have interpreters.
Okay, great. Todd Jamison with Renfro Productions, producers of the Cincinnati Boat, Sport, and Travel Show, an event which has been in your building since it was created. The senior management team of Renfro has more than 125 years' experience in the consumer show industry. I alone have 40 years' experience being a consumer show producer, also past two-time president of the National Association of Consumer Shows, representing more than 500 consumer shows across North America. We are very interested in a renovation of the Convention Center. We feel currently the plan is going down the wrong path. An 18-month closure would be, will be devastating, not only for the consumer shows that frequent the facility, but also the city, for those that work in the hospitality industry. A hard closure of 18 months is devastating. We are asking you to consider a phased-in program in which the major events would allow to operate within the facility during the time of the construction. If the center is to close, there are shows there that could be down for two consecutive show cycles. There is no telling what world we will come back into after those two cycles. Will we still have shows to return to? I don't know the answer to that. I don't think anyone knows the answer to that. We don't have a crystal ball. We do not deny that the Convention Center could use some upgrades. Absolutely, it could. But things have to be done and staged in in a way that will keep us all gainfully employed, keep tax dollars coming into the community, parking garages filled, and a future for all of us.
Thank you very much. I'll let you go over because I interrupted you. I apologize. Gregory Parker.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for providing some time, and I won't take much of your time. I'm just here to represent the African-American Chamber of Commerce and those businesses. We are involved with 3CDC in getting small African-American and minority businesses involved in this project. So, we certainly advocate that it continue on and progress. And that's really where we want to come in. We really believe that this is going to be an opportunity for smaller businesses to grow and scale up. We've got a great partnership with some of the primes that are involved in this contract. So, we are excited about that and just want to see that this project continues on. So, thank you very much for your time. And we just want to advocate for that.
Thank you. Joe Pinto.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Joe Pinto, and I'm the General Manager of the Hyatt Regency. I'm also the Chair of the Cincinnati Hotel Association, otherwise known as the CHA. I'm here today in support of the plan to renovate the Duke Energy Convention Center. The proposed renovation plan is much needed for Cincinnati to remain competitive and securing convention business for our city. The Midwest cities and our comp set have invested in their Convention Center districts. We must do the same. The proposed improvement plan for the Duke is creative in its concept, and it accomplishes much of what we need as a hotel community. The timing of this project is also very critical, and to delay the closure of the Duke beyond the proposed construction dates will cause havoc as we continue to turn away business in preparation for the construction. I'm also here to request Commissioners implement the 1% increase in the county hotel tax that is now available to us. The 1% increase to the county hotel tax is a critical piece of the funding required to renovate and modernize the Duke. It is this type of investment into our Convention Center district that will generate a substantial ROI for Hamilton County and create hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs in the process. Lastly, over the past six months, the CHA has convened multiple meetings with our member hotels. In these meetings, we discussed the need for the Duke renovation and discussed the impact of the hotel tax increase. Although no one likes to see tax increases on our hotel guests, our member hotels support this increase, which is intended 100% to be used in the Duke renovation funding plan. We believe that the resulting improvements at the Duke will offset any negative effects the higher tax rate will create. I urge you to move forward with this plan and make Cincinnati a desired meeting destination for decades to come. Thank you for your consideration of this critical issue, and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Brendan Cole.
Thank you, Madam President, Commissioners, Administrator Ludo. Thanks for having us here today. I'm Brendan Cole, the President and CEO of Cincinnati Regional Chamber. More than a year ago and over the last couple of years, we've spoken with you about a critical priority and a once-in-a-generation opportunity to grow cultural vibrancy in our region. For too long, our community has lacked a clear strategy around our convention district. We had a convention center that was in dire need of investment, and we were missing a headquarter hotel. Our recommendation that you agreed with was that this community needed a partner and leader who could step forward and put together all of the pieces to create one of the most vibrant convention districts in the country. You were wise to agree that the right partner was 3CDC. Thanks to your leadership in Hamilton County, along with the city, the port, and of course, 3CDC, we have in front of us a plan to invest more than $700 million in our convention district. This plan achieves an improved Duke Energy Convention Center, new technology, new facade, new meeting spaces. In short, a competitive facility that will bring more people to our region. Inextricably linked to this plan is the development of a headquarter hotel, one that will complement our existing stock of hotels and allow us to attract conventions and meeting business from throughout the world. The overall development plan is thoughtful and strengthens a partnership between the city and the county, something important to get this done for all of us. Perhaps most importantly, and from the outset and throughout this entire conversation, equity and inclusion has been a fundamental component of the work. You can see that in the fact that Triversity and Josten, two large minority-owned companies that grew by the way with support from the Minority Business Accelerator, are lead contractors for this project. We're excited about two Black-owned businesses that are opening within a couple of blocks of this project, businesses that are betting on and clearly need the Convention District to succeed. It's no small thing to take this step. I believe it's the most well-organized, well-thought-out, and significant development around our convention center since it was expanded more than 20 years ago. We're grateful that you're prepared today to endorse this comprehensive and bold plan. The Cincinnati Regional Chamber fully supports it, and we urge you respectfully to vote for it today.
Thank you. Joe Savarise? Did I say that correctly?
Commissioner President Reese, Vice President Drew House, and Commissioner Summer Dumas, I'm Joe Savarise. It's my honor to serve as the President and CEO of the Ohio Hotel and Lodging Association, which is celebrating its 130th year of continuous operation, and our Greater Cincinnati Lodging Council, which represents 230 hotel and lodging businesses throughout the region, 100 of them in Hamilton County. Thank you for allowing me to share our support on the record for the 1% lodging tax for the specific purpose of the renovation and improvements of the Duke Energy Convention Center. The Cincinnati market is challenged with the need for significant upgrading of its convention center package. Addressing this need will keep us from losing future business and will have positive impacts on the entire convention district, the development of new convention headquarters hotel, and the elevation of the entire destination. Hotels recognize that the necessary development will not happen without first addressing the needs at the Convention Center and providing the necessary funding mechanisms for that project. The impacts will be real, and they will be quickly realized. Our industry's experience with similar convention center projects in other markets demonstrates they are a catalyst for increasing travel to the destination, securing larger and more lucrative events, increasing the return on investment to the community through larger returns and existing sales and lodging taxes, and producing new and expanded employment opportunities for thousands of local residents. Jobs in our industry are true opportunities for prosperity and advancement, starting well above minimum wage, with benefits, educational assistance, high job satisfaction, and the fastest career path available to supervisory management and even C-suite roles. So, reaching a consensus on supporting this proposal was not an easy task, nor one that was taken lightly by our industry. A high tax rate at checkout is something that we need to pay attention to for competitiveness, but we believe that it is important to move ahead with this proposal, and we do urge your positive support. Thank you.
Thank you. BMO. The tail.
Madam President and Commissioners, thank you for having me. I'll try to be brief. I'm a board member of Visit Cincy, and my role on the board is I represent the Northern Cincinnati Hotels. And so you may think that, well, why would a hotel in the northern part of Hamilton County be in support of this plan? I'm here to tell you that, one, we got a majority of the support of the hotel owners and operators in the northern part of the county. But more importantly, when new conventions and larger conventions with different professions come to even the urban core, there is an immense amount of compression that happens. So, the hotels outside of the downtown area do benefit when conventions and more repeated conventions come to our main convention center. Secondly, it's, conventions bring in outside economic dollars into the community. So, you know, people that live in other parts of the country are coming here and infusing new dollars into the community. And not only will it help the hotel business, but the restaurant business and the retail business greatly benefit as well whenever there's thousands of new people in a downtown for three, four, or five days for a convention. So, I would urge the Commissioners, both, all three of you, to support the plan. I think, once the renovation and the host hotel, the new hotel are complete, we'll be in a way more competitive place with our peer cities like Indianapolis, Louisville, and Columbus. And that's important also because right now we've been at a disadvantage for 10 to 15 years and able to just to get conventions that the other cities get. So, I'm pretty excited about the plan. I think the hotel community is excited about it, and I'd urge you to support it. Thank you.
Terry Burke.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I want to thank you all for your hard work you do for the citizens of our county. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Cincinnati Building Trades and Inspires Local Weight to advocate for the passing of Convention Center District, all the work involved there. I hope that you can consider, at a minimum, the utilization of prevailing wage rates for the construction workers that are going to be building these projects. Also, I think that you could consider taking a step further in utilizing a community benefits agreement or PLA, and that could change people's lives in the sense that you come into our apprenticeship programs, members of our locals, and you have generational change there. They're earning good wages for years to come and supporting their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Liza Smitherman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this afternoon. As you know, my name is Liza Smitherman, and I'm with Josten Construction. We are a full-service construction company that's been in business here in Cincinnati, first-generation family-owned business for 25-plus years. And I can tell you, it's because of the work and the opportunities that we have had in this city and in this region that we are in business and have been for this amount of time. I do want to speak to you a little bit about, just as we think about ROI. And when we think about that, we would never focus on an investment without also thinking about the return. As you have heard already, we've been made aware of many of the strategic importance and benefits of why we should move forward with this real estate development opportunity and this tax. What is also strategically important are the benefits that are evident in the opportunities for people like me and our business and the business opportunities for many MBE and WBE businesses in this city and this region. As we think about that and we think about how that works and how that happens, we think of something called location. Location, 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 right? With this project being downtown, its premium location makes it a strong preference for workers who want to be part of a transformational and a premium location where it's convenient for them to actually be a part of this project. Whether you live in the urban core or you're in the outskirts of the county, having opportunity to work in a specific place with a convenient commute, especially if transportation is of an issue for some, provides for stability and retention of workforce, something that we ultimately absolutely need and want to continue to support. Thank you for this time. I appreciate it. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Josh Smitherman.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. That was my mother, just in case you can't see the resemblance. My name is Josh Smitherman. I'm the Business Development Manager at Josten Construction. We are a merit shop firm, and I'm here to advocate for the transient occupancy tax. So, why do we go to work every day? And I think that that's a little bit different for each of us. But at Josten Construction, our why is to create and provide a diversity of opportunities for all. And one way that we apply that why is through striving to work on transformational projects. Transformational projects, as you just heard, are important as they drive scale and allow businesses and contractors such as Josten to grow our workforce across all divisions of our company, providing more opportunities to field professionals, skilled carpenters, young project engineers, more women who are bringing up through our project superintendent stream, strengthening their leadership skills, their acumen, and their accountability, not to mention their management skills, project managers, and business development marketing professionals such as myself. That's just to name a few of the positions that would benefit from such a project as this. These benefits will be made very, excuse me, will be made by every firm of every size and scope, MBE, WBE, SBE, union, and more who work on this project. The renovation of the Cincinnati Convention Center District is a transformational project. And aside from the aforementioned growth, leadership, and employee opportunities I mentioned, the project will create a whole new ecosystem of hospitality jobs in the heart of Cincinnati, a lot of which we've heard about today as well. These jobs will last a generation, attract new investment in our city, and will benefit workers of a multitude of blue-collar and white-collar disciplines. Enclosing the economic power of this investment to our region and the undeniable benefit to everyday Cinsinadians is why I am here to show my support for the renovation of the Cincinnati Convention Center District. And please ask that you approve this occupational tax. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Julie Calvert.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Julie Calvert, President and CEO of Visit Cincy, the region's convention and visitors bureau. Thank you for the vision of what a renovated convention district could mean for Hamilton County and taking the action to get it to this point today. It is truly a legacy project for this community. A reimagining Convention Center District A reimagining convention center district attracts new trade shows, conventions, and events that have been bypassing Cincinnati for years. Planners have been attracted to the vibrancy of our region, but the facilities were just not good enough. These renovations can increase our value proposition to host meetings multifold. And at Visit Cincy, we believe deeply that this is such a transformational development that we are willingly investing $3 million from Visit Cincy's transient occupancy tax allocation into this very project. This is how important we at Visit Cincy, our board, and our members believe that this development is, and to put it simply, Visit Cincy is all in. Tourism and conventions are competitive business. People choose one city over another, and the renovation of our convention district will put Cincinnati and Hamilton County in a positive position to win yet again. The enhancements to the convention center in the addition of green space, in addition to the new state-of-the-art Headquarters Hotel, will put Cincinnati back into the consideration set for big meeting business. Our county's vibrancy, attractions, restaurants, excellent customer service, and small businesses will always be the difference makers. The entire county will be positively impacted from this development. A healthy convention district combined with Sharonville's expansion, which doubles that exhibit space to 40,000 square feet, will create compression throughout the county. With the approval of the Duke Energy Convention Center renovation, Hamilton County will have two great convention locations, urban and suburban. The investments in both convention centers doubles, perhaps triples, our ability to drive new convention business throughout all of Hamilton County. The influx of visitors from a reinventing convention district will mean more jobs from those working directly for the convention center hotels, but also the ripple effect to our small minority in women-owned businesses that supply them. I respectfully ask for you to vote in favor of the 1% increase in the transient occupancy tax, which will enable us to grow the future of downtown and Hamilton County. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna Taylor Brenner. Oh, sorry. I couldn't read the list.
Good afternoon Commissioners. My name is Deanna Taylor Brewer and I'm the Vice President of Human Resources at Employee Engagement at Visit Cincy. But I'm also the Vice Chair of the Corporation for Finley Market. I serve as a Secretary of the Board of Cincinnati Parks Foundation and a Board Member of Arts Wave, just to name a few of the many organizations where I volunteer my time. I want to explain my background because I'm not just speaking as a member of Visit Cincy, but I'm also speaking as an active member of our community and to see daily what tourism and conventions do to help the city of Cincinnati. A thriving convention center helps create a vibrant downtown. People who go to conventions eat at our local restaurants and stay in our hotels, then they go to our museums and our stadiums. Many of them are seeing Cincinnati for the very first time, and we want to make sure the Queen City continues to shine. The surrounding area of Duke Energy Center has deteriorated and is in need of investments badly. I recently had an employee attacked in the garage next to the convention center. Thankfully, she is okay, but it further proves my point that this area is in desperate need of an improvement. A $200 million renovation of the convention center to improve the aesthetics, amenities, functionality, and flexibility of the existing space makes it more attractive and competitive in the tourism industry. Add in the best-in-class $480 million Convention Headquarters Hotel, 800 rooms, and 80,000 square feet of new meeting and ballroom space, it takes our bid to potential conventions to the next level. Plus, once a mixed-use development with office space, dining, and entertainment options is added, you can book the high-level groups that only top-of-the-line facilities can secure. We can't even begin to think of a convention district and a hotel unless this vote goes through. These projects are dependent upon each other. A new hotel will not be built without renovations to the convention center, and renovations to the convention center will not be worthwhile in the absence of a new Headquarters Hotel. These projects are linked. I thank you for your time Commissioners.
Thank you. John Lanny.
Hello there. Hi Commissioners, President. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is John Lanny. I am co-founder and owner of Thunderdome Restaurant Group. Thunderdome has been investing in downtown Cincinnati for over a decade now. We have eight restaurants just in downtown Cincinnati and employ around 500 people downtown. We're about to open our ninth restaurant, the Davidson, right next to Jeff Ruby's in the old Tiffany's space, coming up. We've been a tremendous partner with Three CDC over the years and others, and, you know, I am here today to fully support this 1% tax for the convention district. I'm also here to support, on behalf of the restaurant industry, our willingness to be a part of this authority board that would, would be, that would go with the 1% tax increase so that we can work with the hotels, the county, the city, and others. It's, Cincinnati has one vital piece missing to its downtown core, and that is the convention. We can't afford to not have a world-class convention center so that we can compete with other cities in, in the region. And so, I don't have prepared remarks, but we've got to get this passed and we're in full support of the 1%. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Jeff Burden.
Good afternoon.
Before you start, I don't want to start as, congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you bring it with you? You didn't bring it?
Thank you.
Okay, now you're two minutes.
All right. Thank you County Commissioners and staff. I'm here today as Board Chair of Visit Cincy, and I ask you to vote yes for the additional 1% lodging tax to support the renovation and upgrades at the convention center and the convention district. This is a tax paid for by visitors who utilize our hotels and Airbnb to the benefit of our Hamilton County residents. A yes vote today means more jobs during construction, we've heard, with a busier convention center, more convention and higher spending conventions using the new exhibit space, more visitors coming to Cincinnati, Hamilton County for a convention or event at the convention center, more spending in our small local businesses, new Headquarters Hotel coming after the renovations are completed, which would bring more visitors to the county, more tax revenue, more tax revenue for the county that can be used for other things. Vibrancy is a part of downtown, in a part of downtown that is underutilized and not particularly attractive at the moment. A no vote means we can only attract smaller and regional conventions, which do not bring in nearly the number of visitors we can expect with the renovated convention center new hotel. No new jobs continue to be passed over and lose out on those big conventions where they instead go to the newer convention centers in Columbus, Indianapolis, and Louisville, and will never catch up to our competitors because they continue to invest in better facilities. And we have continued underutilization of a part of our downtown, which really is a hole of inactivity right now. So, a yes vote means winning. A no vote means losing. I like winning. I like winning. Let's win. Let's move this community forward. So I respectfully ask you, after four years of county engagement and leadership and tons of meetings and hearings, I ask you today, let's move forward by voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Salazar.
That's me. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's Jose Salazar and I'm the owner-operator of Mita's Restaurant located at the corner of Fifth and Race, coming up on about eight years of business. And I am fully in support of TOT, the 1% renovation tax for the Duke Energy Convention Center. As Mr. Lanny mentioned, I also am on board with, with the other tax that we will be implementing. And, and I feel very strongly about the potential for new business that will be able to attract with the increased traffic to the district this initiative will create and maintain hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs, and it'll make the area much more viable and attractive for commerce. In my opinion, this is essential to the vitality of the district, and it will be the only way we can compete for conventions and shows that would otherwise go to other cities. I also want to win. So let's go ahead and pass this, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ricardo Grant.
Hello. Good afternoon and thank you for having me. My name is Ricardo Grant. I am a small business owner here, several businesses in the downtown Cincinnati area, one of which will be opening this fall, Love on Fourth, which is in the bottom of the Fourth and Race building. So I am in full support of the continuation of the Convention Center District plan. The plan itself, I'm advocating for, but the reality is, is that I'm here to advocate for people who look like me. When I walk out of my front doors of Love on Fourth, there's six blocks before I see my next black-owned business to my left, four blocks before I see my first black-owned business to my right. I have no doubt that a plan, the continuation of this plan and embracing it and helping us win, like Jeff said, will close that gap, help us advocate to have more vibrancy and diversity and inclusion in our city. My grandmother would say that Rome wasn't built in a day, and I totally agree, but I think it's time we start building. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, can we move forward with this topic? Can you be okay if we advance this item? I'd like first to, would you be okay? I'm sorry. We advance this item? Okay. I would like to advance by leave one. Okay, and that's the end of this, because we got to get here by a certain time. Okay, Angel. You don't have this as the topic. Is this the topic? Okay, you didn't put that on there. You just put Hamilton, Ohio. Okay. Angel, I'm sorry, say your last name.
Batista.
Batista.
Yeah, thank you so much, Commissioner, for having me, letting me speak today. Came a little bit late, that's why that came out, you know, at the very end of it. But, I'm here, I'm the owner of Americano, 545 Ray Street. I happen to be a resident, also here in Cincinnati. Born and raised in Puerto Rico, been adopted by the city now for almost 20 years. So, pretty excited about all the changes that we have seen. This change, obviously ahead of us, we are in full support. I think we have to take into consideration, obviously, the amount of opportunities that come from this. It is interesting to see from, how I was explaining earlier, this is money that's actually coming in from, from the outside, from the visitors. This is an opportunity to attract. It will benefit us, it will benefit those jobs as well. So I definitely, you know, want to make sure that everybody considers all this opportunity, all this benefit that it will bring to the city. And like I said, we're in full support of it as well, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pryor, Stefan Pryor.
Thank y'all for having me, Commissioners. Thank the sign language lady back in the back for doing her thing back there. Well, I support, I support this district. I support it. Yes, I do. I know y'all surprised it ain't on the ballot, but I support it. I like development, but I hate displacement. We need more black contractors down at this project, at Commission Center, if it happens. Not just one black construction company, let it be equal construction company. I think that would be the good cause of this project, of doing it, you know, the district down there. Uh, Jostin Construction been around 25 years, been doing their thing. That's good. We need more construction companies that look like us. We need that. We need more ownership too. We need to help out with ownership of these properties. Buildings for a dollar, I remember that. I was down here at Ms. Denise Dree House when I heard that. We need more ownership, not renting. We need to stop renting, we need ownership. That's what we need. And in the West End, oh yeah, it's like a Trojan horse down there. We need more transparency down in the West End. When it's building going on, Mr. Burden in the back, we need that, to be more transparent to the black people in the community instead of doing the Kenyan bar all over again. We can't have that, as black people. So we need to treat equal around the board. We have to. It's a must. We've been seeing this so many years, y'all. Enough is enough. This project, if it go through, make sure black contractors down there. Please. We keep going through this over and over again, y'all. Ain't y'all tired of the same cycle? Start helping out the black community. And I'm tired of this too. Y'all help people who y'all want to help, but y'all want to help the ones that really want a difference in the community. So, please, think this over, what y'all about to do. Because we need more people to come down here to look like me. I love y'all guys and I love myself and you can't do nothing about it, all right?
Thank you. So that was the last speaker on this particular item, and since we have a lot of speakers that spoke on this, I wanted to move forward with this item. I want to advance item number one, but I want to explain, what are we voting on? This is not voting on whether or not we're doing a convention district. That's been voted on already. We're voting on a lot of things that were talked about is not in this, what we're getting ready to vote on. So, Mr. Ludo, will you tell them what is actually the wording of what we're voting on today?
Certainly, Commissioner. So, the precise wording of the resolution, by leave, is a resolution levying an additional 1% hotel lodging tax and revising the Hotel Lodging Excise Tax Code of Regulation. So this is the board's consideration of a 1% occupancy tax increase in Hamilton County. This was, just as, by way of a bit of summary, this was the 1% that was authorized and approved by the Ohio General Assembly in the last budget process. The purpose is to raise approximately $40 million as part of the financial and capital stack for the, for the modernization of the Duke Energy Convention Center, which, as have been mentioned in some of the comments, is a component, as you indicate, Commissioner, one component of the broader convention district upgrade project. We've had several presentations on this, I'm not going to go in any further, much more detail than that, but to your question, this also modify, this resolution also modifies the occupancy tax regulations to do a couple of things. Number one, it implements that 1% tax. It also changes the payment cyclically, I'm sorry, the payment cycle to monthly from quarterly as well. So, to your question, that's the full scope of the resolution that's being voted on, is the raising of that tax and the modification of the regulations.
Okay. And it's for convention center only, not the hotel?
It's for the convention center, correct.
And can you also, the reason we're voting today, we thought originally against the hotel, we had heard from some hotel folks just a minute ago, originally they said they could move forward, now that has been pushed back right to December, or can you clarify that?
Yeah, so we had had some conversations with the hotel community, and we wanted to try to get as, assuming the Commissioners voted yes to approve, we wanted as much time to develop a revenue history on this before bonds had to be issued. We were talking with the hotel community, and initially, as you indicated, we were looking to implement on November 1st. So, consideration on October 5th and levying and executing the increased tax on November 1st. However, in discussion with the hotel community, the thought was to provide a bit more time for those hotels to modify their finance systems, and so they were indicating that from the time the board acts, if there could be close to two months, that would be a better, better timeframe for hotels to, to act, modify their finance systems, et cetera, so they wouldn't have to rush to do that. So that was the purpose of pushing it back from the November 1st to the December 1st date.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Dree House.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody that came in to testify. This has been a very long process, and so to see the diversity of people that are here to speak in favor of this project is gratifying, and I'm very, it's been very helpful to hear your perspectives and to understand the reason you are supportive of the project, because you're supportive for different reasons, and I think it's really helpful for us to understand that and to know that. And so, from my perspective, this is a significant marker in what is a bold step in revitalizing the Convention Center District. I know someone said this has been going on for four years. This has been going on for seven years. I mean, this has been going on since we had public hearings about what the top priority for this county would be by way of some of these really big economic development projects. And so we embarked on that, I think it was 2017, it could have been 2018, but it was quite some time ago. And the convention center rose to the top because of the nature of what the, or the opportunities are there, but also the nature of what the current state is and how we are losing out on opportunities because of the, the state of that complex, and that we weren't really coordinating that as a district. It was a very disparate kind of conversation between the city and the county and the privates, and we were not walking hand in hand. So it became a top priority for the commission, but many pieces had to fall in place. We knew we needed to get rid of the Millennium Hotel, which was not serving the community and was certainly not serving as a Headquarters Hotel. And we also needed to renovate and expand the exhibit space at the convention center. That was what was in front of us to, in order to really capture the opportunities that exist in the Convention Center District. So at that time, we were accumulating money in the TOT, in the Hotel Motel Tax, and it was very deliberate. It'd been happening before I got here, over many years, to make sure that we were in a financial position to finance those, those projects and those renovations and expansions. Well, then COVID happened, and that revenue plummeted, and you saw the chart at our last meeting with a bar chart, where we had the bars going up, and then it just plummets during COVID. Nobody was staying in hotels during COVID. And so, the revenues went down. And so, we are now in a And so we are now in a position to continue to move this project forward, but we have to think a little differently about what we can afford. And so, um, we are in a position now to do the renovation of the Convention Center, which is necessary in order to get any of this moving, and, I might add, in order to get any hotelier to say they will build a Convention Center Hotel in this community. Without the renovations, every single one of them said, no, we will not come, and we will not build a headquarters hotel here. And so the renovations are something that need to happen in order to allow the rest of the dominos to fall. Um, so, the first domino was the Millennium. So we got control of the Millennium, the domino fell, uh, made it possible for the rest of, of this conversation to even take place. So then we understood that, as I said, we were looking at this kind of in, in parcels, and it made a lot of sense to coordinate with the city, to organize, uh, to have a common purpose, to have a common vision for the, a district. They own some of the property, the Port owns some of the property, we had some private developers in the property. So we had three CDC say, all right, we'll step up and try to help organize all these pieces so that we're moving forward collectively. And so that's what we did. We had a, a contract that was brought in front of this Commission and the City of Cincinnati, we all agreed to that, and so that has helped move this project forward. Um, I might say, and I'm going to back up for a second, we, we talked about the renovation and a possible expansion of exhibit space. You know, from my vantage point, that is still in the offing, that is something we still need to contemplate and consider. We can't afford it right now, but the renovation of the Convention Center, in addition to the Headquarters Hotel, will gain us some exhibit space. It's 12,000 square foot of exhibit space, plus the outdoor space to the east, which is programmable, and other cities are doing this kind of thing with green space. And then we'll have 80,000 square feet of meeting room space and ballroom space in the hotel. So we are gaining some space here, leading us into what we know will eventually be a much larger expansion. Um, so in order to get all this accomplished, we put together a financial stack, it's, you know, everybody's participating in the financial stack, and we need the 1% increase to the hotel motel tax to make that financial stack work. And so we had to reach out to the hoteliers. And I'm very grateful to the hoteliers, both in the city and up in our northern neighborhoods that benefit from this Convention Center and also the Sharonville Convention Center. You know, I, I know there was a lot of conversation about this. It's a difficult conversation to have for the hoteliers, but they are on board, um, and they have said yes to increasing the hotel motel tax, knowing that that tax is being levied on folks that are coming and spending on room nights in the hotels. To my view, it's a users' tax, right? We're, we're renovating the Convention Center, the folks that use in Convention Center are the folks that stay in the hotels. So to my vantage point, this is not coming out of the general fund, this is not taxpayer dollars, these are dollars that are being generated from people staying in this community to utilize the facility that we are renovating. So I think it's an appropriate place for us to look for, um, that, that investment from the county. So, we needed help from the state. We couldn't do it. We needed state legislation to be passed. And so the delegation got involved, Bill Seitz led the charge, um, but it was a bipartisan effort, and so all of the delegation came together and said, we will support you in doing this, as long as you've got the hotel community on board, which we did. Um, so that moved forward. We got the northern, uh, communities, uh, in, in support as well. As I said, the retailers are here, they're supportive. Importantly, the City of Cincinnati, the mayor, and all the city council are supporting this project. And so, um, I, I feel as though it is time, uh, to move this, we've been talking about it a long time. We are finally in a position to move this thing forward and come together and talk about this district and the revitalization that is going to happen, um, given this investment from the city, the county, and the private sector. So, um, I love the quote about Rome. Uh, yes, Rome was not built in a day, but let's get building. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments. I think we need to just not glaze over the fact the money comes from visitors. We're not taking money from our residents in Hamilton County, it comes from the visitors. Um, and also, I think this was a very creative way, uh, to provide additional funding by having the 1% tied increase. Um, it was just the best way to do it. And thirdly, the diversity and inclusion component has already been addressed and needs to continue to be addressed, uh, by the contractors that we have that are being involved in this project, um, if this is passed. And let me make it very clear that my number one focus is people, not infrastructure. But I'm not naive to under, uh, to not understand, realize that we're in the metropolitan area, and we can't stand still. We have to move forward, or we'll be left behind. And not only will we not be able to attract people to this area, but we won't be able to retain them either. I also understand that it takes a commitment of monies to make money, you have to put some money in. It'd be nice if we didn't have to. But the county has restricted funds that can only be used for certain projects, so I want to make it very clear that we're not taking from the homeless, we're not taking from the other housing and all those things, we're not taken from anywhere. You can rest assured that my decisions will be the best for the people with the information that has been given me and the research that I conducted myself. Remember that making a decision to fund one area, once again, I want to reiterate, takes nothing from the other area. This is something we need to do to move forward, uh, to make us competitive, and I believe that this, uh, increase will do that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, I want to thank everybody that has come down, and then the tons of calls that we have received in our office who could not come down. And some people did not want to necessarily show their face, but said that they are taxpayers and had a number of concerns. For those who may not know, as it relates to my own background, uh, this is my industry. Uh, I've been in tourism, I've been in marketing, I've actually booked major conventions at the toughest of times. So this is not a question about, are you for progress and can you move forward, because my track record is impeccable. At the toughest of times, I got on planes, when no one wanted to hear from Cincinnati, and booked conventions. When we had the lowest occupancy in history, no one was booking our rooms, they said, what can we do? The Convention and Visitors Bureau before then, the person quits, and I can't sell this place, it's too tough. I got on planes and said, no, we're not counting Cincinnati out as the vice mayor. During that time, I learned a lot in talking to meeting planners and what are they looking for. And while we want to do beautification, that is not their first priority. They're looking for exhibit space because they want a blank canvas. And so a lot of times, you can't even bid on something unless you meet the minimum requirements. So you have to have so much space before they even think about you. I don't care how nice it looks and pretty pictures, if you don't have this many square footage, you're out, and they're going to consider someone else. Because they bring in their own carpet, they bring in their own exhibits, they go to Geo Fern and rent everything, uh, they go to Prestige and rent the sound, they bring everything in to make it uniquely theirs. So I brought in hundreds of millions of dollars through conventions that I had to go and talk to and beg and plead and convince that it's okay, and the list goes on. And a lot of those conventions are African-American conventions, and all of a sudden now, African-Americans are in the back of the conversation. We're trying to get 15%, when those NAACP's and the Shriners and, uh, noble blacks in law enforcement, they came in and took a chance on us. So I learned a lot with that, and then I went on to become the Deputy Director of Tourism for the entire state of Ohio, all 88 counties, and got a chance to really understand and bring business to the state. So we start there with, um, my intentions. But as I sit here with that experience of bringing conventions, of booking hotels, bringing money to the area at the toughest of tough times, putting together mega weekends that we never had, but now we do them now, Red Hot Weekend and so many others, even bringing my own college and convincing them to come in tough times, Grambling State to play at the then Pa, uh, Paul Brown Stadium, and bringing people from all over the country, and even being seen as one of the top cheerleaders for Cincinnati, that's what they've called me. When I get a deal that's in front of us, what we're looking at is not whether or not we should do an expansion or renovation or hotel, it's about how we do it and how we pay for it. And so what we're voting on today is not the hotel. Hotels not even involved in this at all. And we started with, we tore down a hotel. 800 rooms, whether you liked it or not, they paid property taxes. So that was revenue, when they say, well, this is just restricted, no, we brought some money in because we had property taxes. We no longer are collecting any property taxes off that property, even though the taxpayers are on the hook for $55 million. It's, that, that, we didn't just get the hotel and they handed it to us, it's a $55 million debt that still ain't been paid. And if you ride by there, it's nothing but some grass. That's the only green thing that's over there. And my position is, I'm trying to bring in outside money to help reduce the cost on people who live here. Now, I'm going to ask if you would put that slide up, because we don't do anything in a vacuum, and many of the people who are here today, I'm sure you will also come back and testify for these other projects. We've got a stadium in about a month or a month and a half, they're supposed to come to us and tell us, Gensler, we've been waiting on them, how much is this stadium going to cost us? And we are responsible for the stadium. We don't own Convention Center, but we do own the stadium, and the county is responsible. I'm sure some people are going to come in here and say, we got to do this. It's $500 million right now without any bell or whistle. The voters voted for the stadium, but they don't want to pay the 96% because when we got to the details, that's my point, we get out of the con, that's my point, we get out of the concept, when we got to the details, people say, wait a minute, why are we paying 96% of the cost? So we've got a deal that was 20 years ago that we've got to deal with in a month and a half, and I'm sure some people will say, we got to have it, and they do have tourism. They bring fans, they book hotels. Tennessee used some of the restricted funds to take the money off the backs of the local taxpayers, that's how it ties in. So we want to make sure whatever fund we got, we want to maximize and get the best deal. And so that's what I'm here today for, how do we get the best deal? And we got to have flexibility. We can't come and say, well, no, we can't listen to nothing else. Tennessee used, and they get a brand new stadium. They use what? The hotel motel tax. Number two, I told you about the Millennium and $55 million, and we still are talking about on that space, putting something that doesn't make any money. Now, we're unique. Most cities don't have a fountain square that's just two blocks down from their Convention Center. So we already have programming on there. We got music, we've got food trucks, now, now we're going to put it right here and don't make any money? I don't know, is that the best deal for the taxpayers? That's the question that has to be asked today. Or can that do something else to help me get the $55 million back? That's what the taxpayers would be asking. Of course, we have on here, Duke Energy was first said it was going to be an expansion. So now we find out it's a beautification project for $200 million, but I'm only getting 12,000 more square feet. Does that give me bigger conventions? The answer is no. It doesn't give us, and we have, we're, we're a seasonal place, so in the wintertime, we don't make anything. So does this get me in the game to get more conventions? Sounds good, but the answer is no. Then, hanging in the, in the wing, the reason we're here, we tore down a hotel, we told them, we're going to tear down, we're going to put you in $55 million worth of debt, we took 800 rooms, we at least got to get 800 back. That's 480 million and counting, and we have, today, we're not voting, people came and testified about a hotel, there's no hotel in this. None of this goes to a hotel. So now, the taxpayers, we're out here talking about, we got a $160 million gap. Well, if I spend up all my money over here in the restricted fund, where do I get this money from? The non-restricted? The general fund? No solid plan. And then, of course, we just had to put in, or, or extra, we put in $20 million to get the regional safety complex done. 20 million we had to put in, because nobody would come to save us for Lincoln Heights. And that's babies hearing gunshots for over 40 years. And we had to do it. Nobody came to, nobody came to save us. We have some partners that put a few little things, but not $20 million, we just had to add more. We'd been holding out to see if somebody else would put some more, but they did not, we had to. Then we're told, well, we can't do a hotel, we got the hotel people telling us, from what I was told, that we can't even do nothing until y'all put in 200, $200 million, and they ain't put in a dime. We have nothing in writing, I have no guarantee that I'm going to get 800 rooms. And that is, but they want us then to also, you got to build us a garage. Now, why did we vote on the garage, putting up $1.9 million to guarantee a garage, and we ain't got no hotel? Now, would somebody do that if they came to you and said, I'm, I'm, you got to build a garage, but I ain't building your house yet? You wouldn't go with it. And then there's another project that'll be coming, Fort Washington Way, they claim they want that. Then there's an arena, so there'll be the same crowd in here giving the same speech, but we got to look at it in a totality. And yes, I've been a winner, I'm going to be a winner and continue to be a winner, but it's more important for me is I want to win for the taxpayers. We got to have a win-win. Taxpayers can't always keep losing. And then the backdrop of that, you can take that down, the backdrop of that is that the homeowners just got letters to every household mandated by the state of Ohio, not the county, that your property is being reevaluated and your property's going up, which equate to your taxes will go up. Now, how much it will go up, you don't know, but it's going up. And then we're building a bunch of things with government money, government tools, government help, that pays no property taxes. But Grandma and Grandpa getting squeezed. So this is what my thinking is, and it's not just my thinking, it's the people who voted for me, because everywhere I go, they stopping me like crazy. We can no longer do silo projects. Today is Convention District, tomorrow, here come a hotel with more money, then we got, uh, Fort Washington Way, they got to have some money for pickleball and soccer on top of there, then we got to go over here, the Bengals are staring us in the face, and we have to, we own that property, then we got the Reds that's coming up, who's paying for all this? Who's paying for it? So, these are some restricted funds, but some of these restricted funds also can be more leveraged. In this restricted fund, I asked them, can we use it, can we use, like Tennessee, a portion of this, 1%, maybe 50% of that 1% we go with this, and 50% we hold and see what the Bengal, uh, what the Paycor Stadium is going to be? And they said, well, you had to give a carve-out, FC got a carve-out. Well, I'm sure if FC got a carve-out, they probably would do a Bengal carve-out. But let's don't go empty. Spin the bank up, and then at the end of the day, the homeowner is the one that's only paying the taxes, everybody else is getting an abatement. Everything we put together is an abatement, it's government tools, if it wasn't, we wouldn't be down here voting on this. If it was all private, they could just do it, and we're not even a part of it. The other thing is, hanging in the winds, I don't know what, which way it's going to go, and I'm not telling people which way to go, but the railroad is hanging out there. If the railroad go in another month, could, if they own the Convention Center, that's infrastructure, couldn't the city, they didn't have the money to pay for Convention Center? And then we could use our money toward what we have to do, which is the stadiums? But we're rushing through, we're rushing this through, the hotels even said, let's push their date back to December to even implement it, and I'm like, well, let's take more time to put the pieces on the table. I appreciate my brothers that are here from labor, uh, and I appreciate, no matter what the project is, we usually, we're going to have, usually have labor involved, we always have. That's not the issue. The issue is, I'm voting on something that does not include the hotel, and we got a $160 million gap. I'm voting on something that does not have any real guarantees, and I appreciate, uh, we did the expansion the first time. Convention Center was one of the first public projects, I was the vice mayor, that ever had inclusion. We had Dee Fox at that time on the project, that's 20 years ago. We got sued. I remember, because I had to make a choice, Reese, do you keep the African-American on the project, or do you kick them off? It was $19 million, I believe, under budget and ahead of schedule. It was nineteen million dollars, I believe, under budget and ahead of schedule. We had just come through the unrest. I said, we keep them on. And we had to pay a little bit. We eighteen million dollars under budget. So the fact of having inclusion on the Convention Center is great. We've done it. Fifteen percent, we've done it. We did it twenty years ago. Taste of Julius is inside the Convention Center and Scott's Barbecue. We've done it. We've been ahead of the ballroom that everybody wants to talk about. I think we have one of the baddest ballrooms in the country and I've been to a lot of them. And it was designed by a minority, a woman, I believe. African-American woman. And now we're saying the ballroom looks terrible. So I think that my decision is based on that this resolution is incomplete. It doesn't, it does not include funding for the entire convention district with the hotel. If it had the hotel funding model today, I probably would go different. I'm totally disappointed because it's the first time in my entire career that I've had, had to vote against a tourism project because it is not complete. The details aren't here. The guarantees are not here. And there's a ton of questions. And when I asked questions, they was getting super, super mad. And we've got a lot of projects with a lot of unanswered questions of how it's going to be paid for and who is going to pay for it. And when I try to look at how do we leverage and stretch and do, there seems to be a lack of interest in compromising, being inclusionary, thinking creatively. It's just a hit the gavel. And we're at a disadvantage because as commissioners, I can't go to Commissioner Drehouse and talk behind the scenes and go through all of the components. I can't talk to Commissioner Dumas and go through and all the components. We have to use an interpreter through the administrator to try to, he tries, has to try to capture all this. But, um, this is incomplete. And it's not a win for the taxpayers. And so with that, fortunately, I've tried to get to the win. Uh, we're not there yet. This should have come as a complete package with the hotel, the, uh, with the convention, all of that in one package. And the hotel right now, the plan is built on a deck of cards. Hundred and sixty million dollars. And we hope we can tax everybody that's got a business around there. We hope we can tax the Uber drivers. We hope, no, no one's coming if you do not have a convention hotel. Period. They're not coming. They said it. And I didn't understand why we couldn't start on the Convention Hotel and then give a notarized, uh, agreement with, that we would, that we would do Convention Center if we have a agreement with you that you're getting ready to start this hotel. I don't know why the hotel could come in here and kick us around and tell us, no, y'all spend the two hundred month, two hundred million dollars. Y'all go get the, uh, get the garage and one point nine million dollars. And then, by the way, we got a gap of a hundred and sixty million dollars. No, 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 you're not going to come in here and kick us around. We got to have a joint agreement. So because it's incomplete, um, I cannot support it at this time. Um, but hopefully as we move down the road and we can answer more of these type of questions, maybe we can get there. I know there'll be other phases and I look forward to getting the details. So, um, with that, I make a, somebody's got to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, it just, yes, I would like to, I know the issue has already been brought forward. Um, I do want to just say that from my vantage point, while the, the, the plan is complete, this is only one component of the plan. Uh, and that's all we've got in front of us, but this is the component that starts to move this project forward. So with that, I'd like to, um,
Let me, let me, let me just say one thing. We have had other piecemeal approaches. We voted on a Wex Garage for one point nine million, no hotel deal. We voted on the, um, Development Services Agreement where, uh, I think three CDC is one point million they'll get, but still no hotel agreement. So this is not just, we're moving it forward. Every time we vote, we're piecemealing. And I guess the difference is I don't want a piecemeal. I want a total package so I can make, uh, uh, the best informed decision. And that's my position. So I just wanted to.
Understood. And mine is that this is the opposite of piecemeal. This is a district, we've talked about it in, by way of a district. We've got to get the pieces of the entire plan that's been in front of us moving in order to start the project. So I, we have a disagreement.
Yeah, we got, yeah, but, but I'm saying it is piecemeal because you don't have a hotel. You've got a plan with a hotel, but you don't have no funding today.
Well, the hotel won't go until we get this done, so.
According to the private sector hotel people.
Okay.
But anyway, I just wanted to say, this is not a total budget of the hotel, four hundred million, the two hundred is not. We're using all the two hundred, all the two hundred million would be paid with the one percent.
Right. So they will not have the conversation until we pass this resolution. So I'm going to make a motion to pass Resolution Number Thirty-eight, levying an additional one percent hotel lodging tax and revising the Hotel Lodging Excise Tax Code of Regulations.
Second, second.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
No. Thank you all. I don't know if you want to stay, we got a great meeting. But I'm sure you'll be back because we'll have other parts that have to get funded. It's not over. Thank you all very much. We'll take a two-minute recess, allow people to clear the. All right, we are back. We will move to the calendar, if I can find it. What did I just do with it? Okay. Okay, we'll open it up. Commissioners, uh, for comments and motions. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. I don't want to extend the meeting too much longer, but I did go to the CAT breakfast. I go to this every year. Um, it is an organization that helps people that have issues related to addiction. Uh, it is kind of the first stop. It's the detox stop and then connect them to, um, long-term recovery. So they had a breakfast, they honored Bill Seitz and others, um, at that breakfast. And so I went to that. It was very well done as always and congratulations to CAT for the work that they do. Um, also had the opportunity to attend the JFS rally in the alley, uh, which was a lot of fun. It's right behind the JFS building. They had music, they had food. Uh, it was very well attended. People were very excited. And thank you, as always, to the JFS workers who have one of the toughest jobs in the county for all the work they do, especially to keep kids safe in our community. And then lastly, I was able to, uh, join Commissioner Summer Dumas for the FC celebration last night. And, uh, Jeff Burding alluded to it. They got the twenty twenty-three Supporters Shield winner, that FC Cincinnati, as the best team in the MLS in regular season. So it was quite the celebration. There was quite a rowdy crowd there. Um, and lots of blue and orange flying around. Um, but FC has really done a spectacular job of bringing a team to this community. And, you know, there's so much spirit around that. Um, it was just a lot of fun to be part of it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as was mentioned earlier, yeah, it was such good positive energy at the, at the match. And I also congratulate them for their success and what it has brought to Hamilton County. Um, in addition, um, I met with Sean Rainey regarding Xavier Plans to Establish Ohio's Eighth Medical College. It would be the College of Osteopathic Medicine. So really excited about that and the potential for that to happen. And their timelines are, um, not too far away. Um, I believe I had it on another sheet, but, um, they have an inaugural class starting in twenty twenty-seven. And their, their graduating class would be twenty thirty-one. But they're looking at the possibility in the next couple of years as they go around and let people know what they're doing to start building. Um, it's a hundred and twenty dol, a hundred and twenty-five million dollar that they will have as an economic impact during the construction. They anticipate an annual impact of forty-eight million by twenty thirty-three. And lastly, I attended the Community Early Learning Centers Childcare Town Hall. I was, um, on the panel, um, and I wouldn't really call it a panel, just kind of discussing issues within. It was done by the Consortium of African-American Early Childhood Educators. And, um, they are working extremely hard for our children, our babies, but hanging by a thread. And what I mean by that is we did give out some money for childcare. Um, I believe it was last year, one point eight million we gave to, uh, Four C's to try to help their staffing. But they are in great need of fees for licensing, uh, rental of their facilities, supplies, additional staff persons. Um, coming up real soon in the state is going to be a criteria where, uh, those childcare directors need to have a bachelor's degree. Some of them don't have that, but working toward, uh, getting that. And so I am going to ask my colleagues to look at a possible supplemental, uh, budget attack, um, addition, uh, to try and give that, um, not just that coalition, but some different, uh, workers, um, African-American workers that are out there that did not get any of the money. As I said, it went to the, the big guy, FC, uh, FC, yeah. But that Four C, so I'm going F C, Four C. But they did disperse, disperse some money all over to different areas. But it was only one person in there. About twenty-six directors, only one person received money from us. So I just ask that the board consider the possibility of supplemental money, uh, for that entity at least. And also, uh, October is Domestic Violence Month. I'll be coming forward, uh, Thursday, next Thursday, uh, with a proclamation to declare October Domestic Violence Month. Uh, the color is purple, if you'd like to wear a purple. And we will have, uh, badges for every, ribbons for everyone to wear in recognition of that. And we have, uh, county buildings that will be lit up in purple. And any other businesses that would like to do that, you're certainly welcome to do that. And that will end my report.
Thank you. I'm going to find my talking points. And I will certainly did a lot, um, this week. Um, I'm going to move to the calendar and, um, we have the engineer here. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, you, you have, uh, your comments.
Yeah, no.
I can't find my talking.
No problem. So, uh, no comments specifically to commissioners, just, uh, two by leave items. Um, your by leave items, number two and three in your packets. Uh, they are both related to the, uh, resolutions in support of the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund applications. Uh, one in Springfield Township, one in Colrain Township on behalf of the Cardinal Land Conservancy. Andy Dickerson is here from Cardinal Land Conservancy. If there's any questions, but I think that these both relate to, uh, in one case, the expansion of a, uh, of, uh, a preserve area and in another, a new preserve area and the application of funds from the Clean Ohio Fund for that. So again, Mr. Dickerson is here. If there would, uh, the board would have any, have any questions.
Okay, I'll open it up. Vice President Drehouse, any questions?
I just want to say that I'm in full support of this. Um, this Clean Ohio Fund was established to do exactly what you're doing with it. Um, and I'm delighted that Hamilton County is going to benefit from some of those state funds that have been set aside. I think a lot of rural communities often benefit from these. People don't always think about the urban communities, uh, and the, and the opportunity for the Clean, Clean Ohio Fund. So thank you for bringing it forward. I'm more than happy to support both of these projects.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you've been here before, but if you could just come forward and just say a little bit for the people that are watching, what we're actually supporting, that would be great.
So, um, thank you, Andy Dickerson. I'm the Executive Director of Cardinal Land Conservancy. Um, we added, uh, open space to our mission about five years ago. So the funds, they were approved, uh, bipartisan at the state level twenty-three years ago. So, uh, Hamilton County gets two point two million dollars a year. And I'm, we're friends with all of our green space folks out there. And, and we're required by law to come to, uh, city township or county that we're working in to seek a resolution of support. So that's what we're doing. Uh, the first project, like, like Jeff mentioned, we're adding on two acres to our preserve on Compton Road. You guys know how difficult it is to get new curb cuts and parking lots. So we were able to work with the landowner to add this, you know, key piece so we can provide safe parking. So that's really a continuation of one you approved a couple of years ago for us. The second one is a really, it's a unique property. Um, you'll love the story on it. I, I won't take long, but it's an old goldfish hatchery. And it's across the street from Colrain High School. And it's remained green space and it's a current wetland. When I was hiking the property two months ago, it's still such a wetland, there was a snapping turtle just sitting in the field. So our goal is to restore that wet meadow, um, try to raise additional funds, uh, through donations to provide, uh, a hard-packed trail for access inclusion and, uh, have it open to the public and work with the school kids to check it out.
Uh, I talked to Brewster Rhodes about your organization and he said, dynamic organization. So when he said that, I said, oh, okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, he's hard to win over.
Yeah, I know. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, I make a motion to approve, uh, by leave two and three.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, in my comments, I do want to say, I want to apologize to, um, Mr. Chad Day and I think it was one other. On the cars, I really, when we separate them, they kind of, I would ask the clerk, we come up with a new system. Because when you separate them out, I thought we were done with that topic and these were just general comments because it didn't have it on there. So we just need to come up with something. I don't want anyone to feel like they didn't get a chance to speak on a topic. And that made it a little confusing because you put, here are the people on this topic and then you put them over on the side with no topic. Um, so that's very important. I don't want anyone to come down and feel like they can't have their opportunity to say something. I know they decided not to, but, um, that's very important. So I want to apologize for that. Okay, I'm going to go to the calendar.
Can I interrupt for just one second? And Jeff didn't say it in his comments, but it's Jeff's birthday today.
Oh, yes.
So I just want to recognize.
By leave number, what number is this one?
That's right. He forgot to add it to his comment.
That's this number four E, what?
Well, now, we've had that conversation. So, uh, so anyway, happy birthday to Jeff.
Yes. Yes, happy birthday.
Yes.
Happy birthday. You want to say anything? Blow out a candle, anything?
Nothing to be said.
Okay. In honor of your birthday, we're going to get through this calendar pretty quick.
There we go.
All right. Mr. Engineer.
I'll do my best to make it. Happy birthday, Jeff. Just one item here today. Item one is resolu-
Item one is resolution to vacate easement right-of-way for a portion of Old Hillside Road in Delhi Township. Uh, we held the public hearing on September 14th, and you closed that hearing. Uh, the county engineer recommends approval of the resolution vacating the portion of easement in, on Old Hillside Road.
Open it up, Vice President Drehouse, any questions? Commissioner Dumas, any questions?
No questions.
All right, I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Jeff, we go to the, uh.
We can go through the consent agenda. It's a very abbreviated one today, commissioners. Uh, I don't, I'll just hit these very briefly. Item number two, uh, is a, uh, resolution related to the purchase of a Ford F-250 on behalf of county facilities for 58,418 dollars. Uh, item number three is a resolution, uh, P-122-23. This is, uh, the, under the revised code, the coroner's office has the ability to, uh, donate, uh, forensic lab equipment to other municipalities and political subdivisions outside of going through the traditional disposition process. Uh, so this is the coroner donating, uh, property, uh, obs, property that we've deemed obsolete to the Toledo Police Department, uh, valued at 750 dollars. I believe it's some air sensing equipment. Uh, we have, uh, item number four, which is the resolution concurring with the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council, um, of the enterprise zones and community reinvestment areas administered by the county. This relates to the presentation that the board, uh, reviewed in, uh, staff meeting last week, I believe. And then finally, we have two items from Job and Family Services. Uh, we have, uh, a resol, uh, item number five, that's a resolution for residential treatment services. This is with Damar Services for 750,000. Uh, we also have a reimburse, this is basically a reimbursement agreement and a cooperation agreement between, um, the county and Job and Family Services, uh, for the, uh, funding by JFS of the Office of Family Voice, uh, which we are now getting up and running, uh, following, um, a long hiatus, which was spurred, uh, pretty much by COVID. So, um, those are all six, or all five by-leave item, I'm sorry, consent agenda items. Commissioner, happy to answer any questions?
Open it up, Vice President Drehouse, any questions?
No question.
Commissioner Dumas, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, I, I move for items number two through six, uh, to be adopted.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you.